Okay, I'd like to call them in order. Has there been declaration of public notice?
Yes.
Any issues with order of business? Public appearances, any public appearances? Consent agenda, I ask for approval of the November fourteenth, twenty eighteen school board meeting minutes. And, I'm sorry, never mind, I'm reading too much. I'd like, I'd ask for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Turned to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information.
We're three recognitions this evening. First of all, congratulations to Minona Grove High School sophomore Trinity McNaul, who won the WIA Division Two state title for diving. High School senior Ellie Everts has received the Rotary Outstanding Student Award from the Madison South Rotary Club. Ellie is a circle keeper, is a member of the orchestra, and is a member of the National Arts Society. Ellie has a black belt in karate and works as a karate instructor and also finds time to play in the Wisconsin Youth Symphony Orchestra. And, Minona Grove High School recently hosted the fifteenth biennial, biennial conference honor band on November twelfth and thirteenth. Concert featured Demondre Thurman, a euphonium solist, educator, chiming musician, and conductor. Dr. Thurman is a professor of music at the Indiana University Jacob School of Music. Over ninety students from south central Wisconsin participated, including thirteen Minona Grove students.
Thank you. Anything else? Correspondence and announcements. All right, administrative reports, starting with Jared.
All right, tonight I want to report out on, given the information regarding the, how it will impact our school district as it relates to the dark store loophole, as we probably have heard through the city of Minona. Walmart here in Minona had challenged their assessments and the city and Walmart have come to an agreement on what the new assessment will be. They're dropping their assessment by ten million dollars. So how that happens, obviously, there is an opportunity for big box retailers to challenge their assessments based on vacant land versus, or vacates property where they would have built their stores versus where their stores were at in the value of inside the store. So what will happen is the district, we have received our bill from the state that we will pay to the city of Minona to give back our shares, so this is the first portion of it. So this is from two thousand and seventeen. So we will be paying the city of Minona due to the change in property values, one hundred and eighteen thousand nine fifty-eight. Out of this, one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. How this works is we will pay the city of Minona and then next October, when you approve the levy, we will then add this back to our levy, so it's actually spread out to our residential or other properties due to the change. And since this is two thousand and seventeen, we will have another one for two thousand and eighteen. And we'll do the same process. So this will have, this will affect our budget over the next four years. So this budget will, we will overspend by a hundred and, just shy of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And then we will get the revenue next fiscal year and then we'll get another bill for a hundred and nineteen thousand. And then the following year, we will levy for that.
What is the number of years in which we will have to do this?
So this will just, the levy will happen over, so the payment will be over two years and the levy will be over two years. So ultimately, from start to end, it will be a four-year process.
So the, what's the total amount that we'll be paying back?
So it will be?
About this number?
Yep, so approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and forty thousand dollars levy. So that's, so in effect, it's a property tax increase due to the assessed valuation?
Correct.
Change sought by Walmart?
Yes.
As a community gesture.
Correct. And so I had the opportunity to meet with the city of Minona to get a better understanding of this. At the same time, TID two will be closing and we will be receiving an additional, approximately one point seven million dollars from that closeout. And February night, we'll report out on that once we have better ideas. But I believe at the November nineteenth city council meeting, they had approved to close that TID. And now we'll go through a complete audit to determine the exact dollar amounts. At that same time, the district will see an additional approximately sixty-two million dollars of property value added to our taxes next year, which will help with the mill rates.
So a question.
Yeah.
How can the city of Minona come to an agreement that costs us two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars without us being part of their?
It doesn't cost us anything. We're gonna, it's just a transfer of funds. We lose the money this year, we get it back next year. And then again, the following year. So, we'll?
Correct, so, so the expenditure will come out of this fiscal year, since we've already passed our levy. And then at next year's levy in October, we will take this hundred and eighteen thousand and add that. So whatever our budget and revenue limit comes to, then an additional hundred and eighteen thousand will be added onto that. So we'll collect that revenue back. So we'll have a dip in our fund balance by a hundred and eighteen thousand.
So who do we pay that money to then?
To the city of Minona.
And then the city of Minona, so it's going to cost the city of Minona two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars?
Yes, so ultimately, the, on the second page already, it gives the calculation. So not only is the school district affected, the Madison Technical College, the sewer district of Madison, and then obviously the city of Minona.
Dean County too.
And Dean County.
But if we're just giving the money and they're giving it back, then nobody's affected.
The taxpayers are affected.
The taxpayers are.
Right, so then that's what I said, right? I mean, we, we are forced to pay this.
Oh, I'm sorry, you meant by we. Okay, so the district's budget is not affected.
Right.
All the taxpayers in the school district will pay more in property tax to make up for it.
Right.
So it's shifting property valuation off of Walmart commercial property into other property, most likely more, it gets pushed more into the residential, but there are other commercial properties that will pick that up.
Right.
So.
So is a lot of people being affected by the agreement that the city of Minona made?
Yes.
And they weren't part of the decision-making process?
Those are taxpayers.
Right.
Right, but the taxpayers are being represented by the city of Minona.
Not the whole, not the whole school district, I mean.
Right.
So, it's weird to me. I thought we fought a war over that.
Yes, we did.
You're talking about starting that one? The, that is correct, the?
I've been at work against Walmart.
There'll be a slight increase in the amount of, you know, essentially the property tax. The taxpayers across the whole district will see their taxes go up a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Next year, approximately half of that comes from Cottage Grove Properties, approximately half of that comes from Minona Properties. The essential argument is that the Walmart property was mistakenly overvalued for the last two years. Is essentially what the settlement is, is reaching, is correct. It's reading. It would have been, the story is, it would have been a higher number. However, when Minona, when Walmart was presented their, made their proposal to the city, they said the building would be worth eighteen million dollars. A minimum of eighteen million dollars. So this agreement reflects that. They were originally asking that the value be reduced to eight million. And, but they ended up at eighteen million, because that's the representation they made the city about the value of the property. Of the building.
I understand that.
Yeah.
That doesn't make it right.
No, doesn't make it right.
It doesn't make them right either.
No, I'm just saying, could be worse. All right, thank you, Jared. Dan?
Okay, just have two items to report on. The first one, with regard to the calendar development, you already received a written report and a last memo, but just to reiterate, we this year have formed a calendar committee. We asked for volunteers. We ended up with approximately twelve staff members, actually teachers that have been part of the committee. We've met twice, the initial meeting, talked about the, this committee would like to decide the survey, all staff members. Survey was sent out, based upon that feedback. Now, the committee has committed two calendar proposals, which they'll conduct another survey to get additional feedback. And ultimately, we'll bring the committee's recommendation to the board, hopefully at our next meeting in December. Second is?
Dan, could I just, so, could you, as you come back the next time, someone thinks that would be helpful for me to understand is kind of, kind of, when you set your first meeting, what the goals for the committee were, how many people were on the, just some base pieces? So that, because, and maybe I don't remember this right, I totally understand if I don't. I was just asking Dean about that, neither of us were totally sure about it. But it was my recollection that, that the personnel committee was supporting going back to a committee to study the calendar that included teaching, the teachers and staff.
I'll be glad to share the minutes of those meetings.
And you, you totally supported that and that was how this process?
It was discussed through several personnel committee meetings in the past, yeah.
Okay, and then, so, again, the committee was formed when?
First meeting was last month.
So that would have been October?
At beginning of, I don't recall the exact dates. I'll be glad to give a written report at the next meeting.
That would be great. And again, so, and then what your kind of goal was for completion of that?
Sure.
Scheduling, so, you know, did, did you kind of plan to me once or twice or whatever?
Right.
Whatever your thoughts were about that. And then again, kind of what your goals were and, because you had kind of talked to us about that. I think it would help for all of us.
Sure, absolutely, I'll make sure that's, and we have minutes from the meetings, so I'll make sure some include it in the next.
And then, in that environment, we can have a little bit of discussion about that. We can ask questions, because normally when you give a report, we don't want it slowly down.
Sure, we'd like to.
Okay, okay.
Okay, healthcare benefits committee. If you recall, back about three years ago, we initially put together a committee to review our healthcare, basically our insurance plan. And that committee met for about a year and a half and ultimately made a recommendation that we brought forward to the board, which changed our plan design from ETF to a dual provider of, at that time, Dean and Physicians Plus. Since that time, Physicians Plus Unity have merged into Quartz. And so, the current arrangement that we have with our healthcare providers expires January first of two thousand and twenty. So, you know, just over a year from now. And so we've reconvened the committee to start now looking again at our benefits. If you recall, we work with Associated Financial as our consultant for insurance. Al Jaeger is the person that has facilitated our meetings. And so we had our first meeting this past week, in fact, just yesterday. And the first meeting was just an introduction, to talk about sharing data, about what other Dean County school districts have, what's the current, you know, market, you know, with regard to healthcare. And the intention would be for this committee to continue to meet over these next several months or up to a year. We'll provide regular updates to the board as we move along. And ultimately, we'll need to make a recommendation to the board, you know, prior to that renewal in January two thousand and twenty. In all likelihood, we, you know, that will be, you know, at least several months in advance of that. So, we'll have some written documentation for you as well. I just wanted to give a verbal report to let you know that we're just starting the process. And then, we just had that committee meeting, as mentioned, last night. I don't have the documents electronically yet, to be able to share out on Board Docs. But moving on in the future, we'll make sure that the board has, you know, more, much more detail in writing the things that the committee's discussing.
Is that the same committee with the same composition?
It is, good question. So we did, because there's so much time invested from those committee members in really learning, they really are experts in the district about understanding the various, you know, parts of the plan design and so on. So we did invite every person to come back.
Who is up? Who would?
So it's a, it's a cross-section of staff, so teachers and support staff. And I think our committee make is approximately ten people. So we did a couple committee members from the first group that chose not to continue on. And then we did ask one or two others, I think we have one that committed, to make sure that we had representation from all the different employee groups, you know, on the committee. And so it really is a, I said, they really are our experts in the district. And I have asked Susan Manning to come on as a board liaison as well. You know, with that committee, she was the first time around and I get, I think that consistency is really important to continue the work that we've done. So I said, we just had the first meeting last night, I wanted to just bring it to your attention that we started meeting. We'll make sure we have much more detail here as we move forward. But Jared and Nicole, you know, also, you know, are part of that. And so, if you guys would like to add anything else about last night's meeting?
Well, I thought what was nice, Dean, was quite a bit of the information that Al Jaeger gave us, who has an incredible amount of expertise in this area, was information, I was just opening my folder, that Jared had already given us. And it, just the layout piece was effectively fifteen school districts, ten school, like twelve?
Yeah.
Something like that, which Jared, again, if you go back and look in your personnel stuff, we already had that. We'd already had that discussion. We had the, you know, when we talked about the attract and retain the benefits. And what was absolutely incredible was the expertise from the staff in this meeting about the cost, the copayments, the single plan, the family plan, the different providers and how that would work and how some of the subtle changes that occurred in healthcare in the last six months, eight months, might affect further conversations. And then Al turned to the staff and said, what are the things that are most important to you? It was, it was one of the really best meetings I've ever been to in terms of the staff's expertise and the interface with Al trying to pull that piece together. And it was, had some very similar components and graphs to what we'd already seen.
Personnel committee had very good data, I think, comparing to our, our cluster of school districts and so forth, I thought. And is this committee going to take up the question that you brought before our committee or just dealing with the current?
I, I think it's, we shared some information, you know, that was pertinent, that was discussed with Personnel Committee about, you know, where benefits fit into overall compensation. Right now, they really are focusing more on plan design and so on. Ultimately, when it comes down to making some decisions and recommendations, you know, there were some really good, you know, questions about, okay, you know, what is the incentive, you know, for, and, and, you know, really we need to look at parameters for cost moving forward. And so I think there absolutely will be some crossover between the work of the Personnel Committee as we look at overall compensation and this group.
Because I, I don't know what the composition would be, but I, by us working with MGA and that sort of thing, that was, that was a group that had a different perspective on this, and we didn't get down to details or anything like that.
Sure.
But someone that's looking only at medical issues may have a different perspective, but we need to keep the work of both in mind, I think.
I totally agree. And I thought, I don't know, I mean, even Al seemed to think that, he never really said that I added anything to. But it was having, again, watching this, the material that was distributed, there wasn't a lot that was different from what the Personnel Committee already had. And there were some very, very similar statements. If you save, if you can save, how, how will you use it, that savings? And again, the identification out loud of, you pay ninety-five percent, you pay five percent, and there's not any other school district in these fifteen that we're looking at that does that. And again, those questions of, those questions.
The Personnel Committee?
Yep.
I think, Jared, I think you would agree, Personnel Committee dealt with that information as information only.
Right.
And to, and to simply say, one of the reasons that salary, one of the reasons the salary may be slightly lower than some of our competitive surrounding suburban districts is that we, we invest more, or we, the choices have been made to have, have the deductible amounts and other factors on both retirement and, and medical. And to some extent, your, your, the argument a bit there was your compensation is buried in those benefits and not into salary itself. And I think it also ought to be said, the committee took no action. Nor was any consensus built from that committee. So both of these committees are operating on the same basis of information, but may come to different conclusions.
Probably about little different issues. But you know, for instance, one, the identification by the staff of some of the issues was incredible. The ninety-five and five, and Kevin Mickelbank sat there and write, you know, added all that stuff up and said, oh, by the way, we're the only one. And he said, we're right in the middle on the payment plan. And then he, they talked very positively about a particular school district. Turns out, look at the co-pays, three thousand to six thousand dollars a year they have to make in co-pays before the full payment is made by the group. Our co-pays? I mean, and I'll just put it on paper, and the group that was having the discussions about, okay, and then Al stepped back and he said, okay, what's important to you as we look at healthcare for you as a staff member? And they started talking about what was important. Very, very similar. And what's the impact on you of that decision? So, did I read that? Good.
Question?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Possible action items, we have a resolution to designate the, this is the proceeds from the sale of lands on Damascus Trail to fund balance and balance for debt service payment. Explain that.
So tonight, we are asking the board to commit six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to fund balance, commit within fund balance to be applied towards non-referendum debts. So a little bit of background is we had purchased the forty acres on Bus Road for the potential new elementary site, school sites. And we had taken out a short-term loan that actually comes to maturity on May first of two thousand and twenty. And so, through the conversations of how we were going to fund that, we had identified the potential of property that we would be selling, the potential of the TID district closing in Minona, the potential of just using fund balance outright, and then also the potential of incorporating that into the referendum. But we did not incorporate the one point six million dollars into the referendum when we asked the question. We had identified that we had two other revenue sources that would be able to come to that one point six million dollars. One of those was obviously selling the property on Damascus Trail. So there, it's classified as two large lots, however, there can be ten residential lots there. So we were actually able to close finally on the fifth, or on the fifteenth of November. And so the six seventy-one twenty is the actual proceeds, proceeds that we received from that sale. So we actually sold the property for six hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then we had some closing costs to bring to the six seventy-one. So by making this action, we actually commit this money into fund balance that would be applied on May first of two thousand and twenty towards the payment of the one point six million dollars.
Thanks. What's the practical effect of the motion and why do we need one?
Okay, so per board policy, we have multiple different classifications. By the board taking this vote, and if it passes, it's the only way that we can spend this money unless the board takes an equal action to remove it. So what it does is it actually is being very transparent to our community that we are taking the six hundred and seventy thousand dollars and applying it. Now, the board could come back in two months and change that, but they would have to take the same type of action to actually physically remove it.
Okay. But other than that, it has no practical effect on?
No. Like, we're not gonna, it's just gonna be classified in a different account number within fund balance.
Okay. Question. So the bottom line is, is that we sold the property?
Yep.
We're taking the full balance of payments from that property to reduce debt?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd ask for a motion for approval of resolution to commit general fund, fund balance in the amount, to commit to the general fund, fund balance in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one thousand and twenty dollars for non-referendum approved debt service payment.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Turned to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, facilities, facilities planning related items.
Okay, so, as we mentioned, this will likely be a standing agenda item, you know, for the foreseeable future. And at our last meeting, if you remember, we reported that we had our kind of initial kickoff meeting with EUA and Fendorf just to look at the big picture of kind of the planning process moving forward. We've had one more meeting since with a little bit more specific information. Just want to remind you that we'll have representatives from EUA and Fendorf come to the next board meeting, where we'll then have a lot more detail for the board to, you know, really look at and provide feedback on. But I did provide three documents for your review on Board Docs. And in particular, the last one that we just added, you know, late, or last night, the revised project charter. This is a working document, you know, that we will, can continue to revise. This is a real good example of something that, as far as the board giving direction on, you know, the overall scope of the projects, that's really important. And so, we took a shot at our first, you know, draft of this, looking at the project goals specifically and, you know, several subcategories underneath there. And so, tonight, if there's, if you have the chance to review and you have any thoughts, we can talk a little bit tonight, but for sure, at the next meeting. You know, this would be something that we want to make sure that you're comfortable with everything on there, you understand what everything means that are part of those project goals. And we can make any revisions that the board would wish to, you know, as well, as we begin this planning process. So it's really important that we're all on the same page before we start any kind of design, you know, or anything like that. And so that's one really important piece. May I come back to that? And then just to clarify the other documents, the architectural design process, I think you saw before, just a reminder about that piece. And then the visionary team description. I think you also received a memo that I actually wrote to the staff that I shared with the board as well about the process. And remember, we really have two design teams. One for the design of the new school, and then another design team, meaning a different set of architects that will work on all the renovations. So specifically for the design of the new school, we have a small team to start with, that we're calling a visionary team, just to not actually design it and do all the, you know, actual floor plans, but just talk big picture about the types of things. How does it relate to the education, those services we provide here at Minona Grove, as well as looking into the future to get started with ideas? And then ultimately, all staff, you know, as we work through the process, will have an opportunity, you know, for input. As far as the specifics about how that works, again, that'll be the type of thing that we definitely will discuss in detail the next meeting when we have the architects here, you know. But they said, at this point, we're starting to go kind of planning, the process part of it, I should say, is really what we're working on right now. So?
Will they have an opportunity to, to visit some schools that have been recently designed of various plans, formats, and so forth?
Yep, great question. And so, yes, the answer is, yes, they are, we already had, they had one evening where they invited several school districts, just administrators, to an open house at one of the new elementary schools in Sun Prairie that was recently opened and designed by EUA and built by Fendorf. But now we also make sure that our staff, you know, teachers, administrators, have an opportunity to visit several schools. And so we're in the process of planning those site visits as well.
Okay. Any questions? Susan?
Dan, I know that, that group needs to be small enough to be able to have discussion and develop expertise. But I think in some way, you know, I know there have always been issues about getting people there. You know, I would say, there may be some board members that would be available on that night, would really like to go on the visit. It's kind of like, not as a committee member, but kind of like when we were walking through the tours of the schools. You know, it wasn't our job to participate or communicate, but it was very helpful to watch and listen to the presentations in those buildings.
Absolutely. I apologize, I should, no question, I think it would be very important.
I don't want to take a place, I'd much rather have Dean Mathie there or one of the teachers there, but.
I, I'm not sure what size groups would?
I don't.
Because I think part of the goal is to be able to visit at least some of the schools during the school day that actually, while students are present. while students are present, to, you know. So we're still working on that, but I'll make sure, I think that certainly seems feasible to me.
And then the other thing that came up recently, I think that, and I know that we're still at the global piece.
Mm-hmm.
But one of the discussions we had recently was about school districts actually putting clinics into their facilities. And as we go forward in design, you know, part of the problem is we have nursing staff, but they don't really think about having a clinic in that environment and how to staff the clinic. And again, I looked in a call for that whole wellness piece, and what's the reward for the wellness piece? And do we require that everyone have a flu shot that the, can do that within the parameters of their family and their care in providing that kind of thing? So as we move forward in the global process, it would be really nice to have, I don't know, maybe somebody from the healthcare team, or a piece that has, someone that has kind of that focus that we're getting from that committee and how beneficial. Again, as we partner with Dane County on the mental health pieces, you're going to need a place where these people can work with the kids. So I don't know how that fits into the global design, but it, I mean, one of the things Andrew talked about at the very beginning, and was quite serious about this, was room for expansion. So as we build the school, we don't want to start crowded without the space that we have for needs that are visionary for us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could we make sure we build a gym that?
Well, that's in, if you look at the documents, that is one of the thing, on the, you know, the goals document, the project charter document, that's one of the things that's explicitly stated.
Oh, okay. And who's that? That's great.
Design goals, if you look at the revised project charter that's included in board docs, and you look at the design goals, it talks about the expansion and size being, you know, various issues.
So what section are you under, 1A, B, C, D, E, F? Where?
Uh, 1B.
Okay.
There was, there was more.
I, I think it fits right there. I think that's great.
1D. And the design goals, 1E.
Yeah.
So, thank you. And everything that you state, we'll take notes and make sure we bring back in discussion, you know. But also, I think it's really important to mention, some of you may not have had a chance to read this in depth, so please, prior to the next meeting, and we'll post it again, you know, read through that in detail. And that's really important, that this is the opportunity to make edits to add additions and so on.
Just offer a suggestion. We have, we have some people in the community who may not be formally tied to Fendorf or the others that have had background in school construction or large construction, or, or in that field. And I would hope that you wouldn't make the whole committee up by that, but have some people on there who are simply not raw rookies about buildings and construction.
Sure.
It can ask some of the right questions, the people, rather than, rather than being at the ravages of the people who are going to get the contracts.
Yeah.
Peter, do you remember the point? I really don't, that they hired, wasn't it Michael Huffman?
Huffman.
Who came in, who basically represented.
Fairly early on in the process.
So, again, with that thought, we had an advocate sitting right there from the very beginning, kind of looking out for us with that kind of expertise. So I don't know what the thought process on that is.
Sure. So the difference is, when the actual general was built, the district hired an architectural firm, I believe Bray, to design the building, and then you hired a general contractor to build it. Okay? The difference is, Fendorf is not a general contractor, they're a construction management. So Fendorf is our owner's rep. They will, they will be taking all the bids, and if they are, for any of the work, they have to, you know, self-bid as well. But the majority of the work will not be done by them. They're really serving in that role. So that was the RFP that was sent out at the time. And so it's a very different setup than having a general contractor.
Does, Fendorf does construction?
They, if they do any, they, I believe, if I recall, on average, they do most projects about 13% of the work. So it's a pretty minimal amount. When you, you know, where they might do more is if you have tight labor markets and, and, you know, have trouble getting things. But it's a very rigorous process they have to go through if they are going to submit any bids to do any of the work themselves. But for the most part, they are serving as the people that are taking the bids for us and recommendations, and they work for us as the owner's rep. So that's the language that was mentioned in the RFP that went out. And so it's a, it's a different, you know, setup than having a general contractor.
Perhaps. I know we've, we've seen this before, but it was a while ago. If you could forward, or maybe just attach it in the next meeting.
Sure.
The RFP or whatever agreement we have with Fendorf.
Absolutely.
So we can look at the language thereof and see what, look what their relationship is.
Because 13% is still $4 million.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, and no idea, obviously, on this project, what that would be. But that's, I believe, their average.
But the, but the presumption was that all the work would be bid out. And if they, and work that they choose to self-perform, they would have to have competitive bids out of, give us, be giving us a little price.
I think that we overs, just as long as we overset on that.
Right.
That's correct.
I mean, I don't not trust them.
Person to your left is the.
Yeah.
Joyce?
No.
Okay.
I think I'm, I think I'm understanding this better, but Michael Huffman did more than just bid on projects. He was a direct communicator with us about the building, about the issues, about things we might want to reconsider.
Yeah, he served as the owner representative. He didn't do any bidding out. That was the Vogel Brothers, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah.
Right.
With the Fendorf setup, we kind of had a group. So if as a board, we said, okay, who's looking out for us? And you say, Fendorf. And I say, well, yeah, I mean, I know the company, I grew up with the man who formed it, I get that. Who do we then, as a board, who comes in and communicates with us?
If I can suggest, for the next meeting, we'll have the documents.
Yeah.
We can look over the documents. I have some of the same questions.
Great.
But let's look at the documents, look at what our relationship is, and then we can decide whether we want to move, where we want to move from there.
And just to be clear, we have a contract with Fendorf as our owner's rep. So.
But I don't want 200 people. I want, yeah, but thank you. Because Peter's saying, yep, I want to know too.
Yeah, we need to, we need to understand the relationship, so let's get the documents and we can.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions related to the, I like the, the project charter. We've used that in the past where you set out what it is you might want to do. At the beginning, you know, the bigger goals and the guiding principles, and we've used that to great effect in some of the things we've done in this district. And so I think it's an excellent way to approach, approach this issue. And I'd like to ask all board members to look at that charter and make sure that that's where the vision that you see, the bigger, the bigger picture about what we're, what our, what our goal is. It should establish how we move forward and what we keep in mind as we, as we go through this process. Okay? I think that's, yeah, I think it's a very important document. All right, future meetings, the, we do want to schedule a special meeting to get started on working with the processes of evaluation for the next upcoming year with Dan. And it's tentatively scheduled for December 12th, if everyone's available for that.
Did we, was that been sent out to us and checked on that? Oh.
No.
Okay.
It was in, my last.
So you're asking right now to check that date?
No, no, it was, well, it was mentioned in his board update. Right?
Okay.
Yeah. So Eric has responded that he's available. I have not, Susan Fox has not had a chance to respond yet.
Yeah.
December 12?
I'm available, yeah. December 12th, Wednesday, December 12th, second Wednesday of December.
Okay.
We have a board, our only board, scheduled board meeting in December is the 19th.
Okay. And then could we make sure that that message, I know, I think Susan gets back Monday or Tuesday, I don't know where Eric is. Can we make sure that, and that board meeting is going to be to do?
Specifically for the upcoming school year superintendent evaluation.
Okay.
We'll start the process as well as actually begin the first check-in, please.
That's interesting.
Thank you. Just to you guys, whatever.
Any preferences?
It's better.
Six, 5:30.
Six thirty it is.
Six thirty?
Six thirty?
Okay.
Unless somebody else is.
I just put in seven on my calendar. Six thirty. I won't argue over 30 minutes.
Can I, can I just say, Peter, I would encourage, I noticed that there's going to be another teaching learning equity meeting on the 4th of December, and then a community engagement meeting on the 11th. I have to tell you, I went to the community engagement meeting last night, and, you know, I kind of sit near the back because there's only so many meetings you can go to. It was excellent. The discussion, the chair brought kind of some thoughts about how they wanted to engage the school district with the community and had an idea. And that committee took that idea and broadened it and brought it to, you know, there's some pieces that I know are going to be problematic in trying to implement it. But the discussion itself was, was really excellent. So I would encourage you, if they're having that kind of discussion about that community outreach piece, what did, Andrew, what was your thoughts? I mean, you were on the committee last year.
Can I just interject, just so you know, the reason we didn't have it on as a report today.
You just had it last night.
Well, and when we did the first draft of the agenda, the committee wasn't scheduled yet.
Oh, okay.
So it was an oversight, and, you know, we could have added it on. So we'll obviously make sure we get it for next meeting.
Again, I didn't intend to discuss the meeting. I just wanted to say that it really was a good discussion, and it was really insightful to listen to the things that kind of the chair brought forward from the committee and the responses from the members. It was, it was really interesting to listen to.
All right, thank you.
I'm here, it's some good ideas.
Motion, once in a while.
You did.
Stop clock's right twice.
You were there?
Yeah. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Andrew, come on.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.